Mr. Stewart, would you please call the roll?
Chairperson Lyman's.
Here.
Commissioner Benasiak is absent. Commissioner Billingsley is absent. Commissioner Slattery?
Here.
Commissioner Henkin is absent. Commissioner Casper?
Here.
Commissioner Terasus?
Here.
You have four present? You have a form?
Thank you. Tom, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please? Will you all join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance is a flag for the United States of America to the Republic, which is saying it's one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice overall.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight. I just want to give a brief overview for those who've never been to a plan commission meeting before, just to give you some basics. We are an advisory council, an advisory commission to the city council. We hold public hearings on zoning matters, as you'll see tonight, new ordinance or zoning variations. And how we do that is we hold public hearings. So for each item on the agenda tonight, there will be a public hearing. We'll make a motion to go into public hearing at that time. John Stewart, our Assistant Director of Community Development, will give us a brief summary. Then we'll have the petitioner come in to speak and we'll be able to ask any questions. After the petitioner speaks, we have the community come and speak. Usually, we're very informal, but tonight, just because of the topic of the chickens, we may have more speakers than usual. So if you filled out a slip, we thank you very much. We ask all our questions and all the information is given within the public hearing for transparency's sake. At the, we then close the public hearing when all has been said and done, and then the commissioners have their deliberations and their make, to make their recommendations to the city council. So any questions on how our format goes? If not, is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak to the plan commission about a topic that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda then to approve, a motion to approve our draft minutes from the April 2nd, 2025 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion approved.
Dave makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Janaro, seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Same.
One abstention of Mr. Slattery? Is the motion carried? Yes, okay. Moving on, we need a motion to go into public hearing of case PC 2510, special use permit for 1880 Arthur Drive, Karen's truck and repair. John, can you sworn in and give us a brief summary, please?
Did you have a, a motion to go?
A motion?
So.
Make that motion.
Second. Motion by Dave, second breath term. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Not?
Aye.
Now be sworn in. It's gonna swear.
If someone's swearing, we're on the vision scenes with the message of ability to tell the whole truth.
I do. Thank you. Okay, this is a request from Manuel Brito of Karen's Truck Repair for a special use permit for a motor vehicle repair shop at 1880 Arthur Drive, located at the southeast corner of Arthur Drive and Howard Drive in the M Manufacturing District. As you can see in the map up on the screen, on the west side of Howard Drive is actually the DuPage, DuPage County Airport. This property is essentially located kind of right in the heart of the manufacturing district. Property is vacant, 4.2 acres, and it has franchise on both Arthur Drive and Howard Drive. The petitioner, Karen's Truck Repair, is currently located at 1090 Carolina Drive, and they are looking to relocate their business, so close down to Carolina Drive, and relocate and open up at the subject site, and they are proposing to construct a 17,000 square foot truck repair facility. They'll have a large paved area to the south of it, just to orient you. So the top would be west, um, which is Howard Drive, and as I mentioned, that's where the DuPage County Airport is. So is large paved area be where trucks would be parked while they're either waiting to be repaired or waiting to be picked up by the owner? Petitioner is proposing extensive landscaping around the property, including a 10-foot fence that would be located along Howard Drive and Arthur Drive. Uh, they are, so this would serve as screening the area from public view. All proposed lighting will comply with zoning code. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed special use permit, and with the conditions that are outlined within the staff report, staff has also drafted findings of fact with the recommendation for the plan commission's consideration. We do have the petitioner present this evening to answer any questions from the plan commission and to provide additional information. I can also answer any questions at this time.
Would the petitioner like to come forward and offer any comments? And if you'll both raise your right hands and be sworn in by the court reporter.
First. Do you sound as well or firm? Is that the truth? The whole truth and not the religion? Yes, thank you.
And can you just state your names for us, please?
Steve Karablos.
And?
Brad Bullock.
Thank you. Anything you'd like to offer to us?
Well, um, the project, obviously, we've worked out all the preliminary schematics and it works rather well with the site. Uh, we located the, the building on the north, northwest side of the, of, of the entire parcel, and we are using the southeast for parking, the truck parking, would maximize the amount of parking for the client. Um, we have enough detention areas of, to the east and to the south, and also enough landscaping area for imperv, for previous, um, uh, the requirements that we need uh, to do the drainage study correctly. We had a civil engineer do a complete uh, grading plan with drainage, drainage and, uh, preliminary, obviously. And it was presented to the, to the board, and we got, uh, comments which we responded to. And, uh, we, I believe we're satisfying all the comments. And, um, uh, other than that, the, uh, the project is a, is a nice project. The building is going to be a precast, uh, concrete panel building, yeah, that's going to be, I think, more aesthetic, you know, to the environment and, um, and, you know, it's not a Butler building per se. So that is all, uh, it's got, uh, it's gonna have more of a curb appeal. Well, we are going to put it together, uh, completely with all the, uh, with all, with all the requirements concerning energy efficiency, um, get all the, uh, um, you know, requirements that we need inclusive of having a sprinkler system throughout and, um, all, all of that is going to take place, uh, under the development of, uh, the permit documents that we're gonna, we're gonna start on next, next phase. So, uh, right now, when the building gets approved, pre-approved for the, for the schematics, we're gonna start to do the actual documents, architectural, uh, civil, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, all that. So it's gonna be a part of the package, package for the permit. Uh, so we are, we are ready to go ahead to the next phase at this point.
Thank you. And you're aware of the four conditions that have been recommended by staff and, and in agreement of those four conditions?
Uh, we have no problem with the four conditions, you know, and one of those conditions were not to keep the trucks on site for more than five, five business days. Is that, is that correct? Yeah. Um, so, uh, we, uh,
Well, and one of the others, the trucks being repaired within the principal structure, no off-site storage, and that there'll be a landscaping plan.
Actually, I, I don't, I don't have it in front of me right now, but, uh, yes, all those are, are no problem. Uh, we will comply with the conditions, um, should be any problem.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? No, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. Is there any special lighting that's required since it's right next door to the airport?
There, no, their lighting, um, would not be, not reach that threshold.
Be concerned about it?
We, we presented the automatic chart for the whole parcel, and we understand that it should be no more than five, um, or deep toward the, on the property line, we are, should be no more than five cameras.
Okay.
Lighting of property. So we have complied with all those requirements.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want to remind the commissioners that all questions have to be asked during the public hearing in a review of the finding of facts on page two and three of the segment of the packet. If there's any question about those findings of fact appeared by staff. Hearing none, I'll call for a motion to, Janaro, are you okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'll call for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion through.
Janaro makes the motion and a second by David. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? And the motion carries. So discussion, is there any deliberation or discussion over the recommendation made by staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, um, approve, recommend the approval of the special use permit and zoning variances, subject to the conditions outlined in our packet, and, um, is there a motion?
Move.
Motion by David, second. So Tom? Can you call the roll, please, John?
Commissioner Casper?
Aye.
Commissioner Slattery?
Aye.
Commissioner Terasus?
Aye.
Chairperson Lyman's?
Aye.
For yes, zero, no, motion carries.
Thank you. And where does this go next?
So, uh, this will go on to the development committee next Monday, June 10th, uh, I'm sorry, June 9th, uh, in this same room, and that will be at 6 o'clock, uh, in the evening. So Monday, June 9th, 6 o'clock.
Thank you. You're welcome to stay, but not necessarily. Moving on on our agenda, I'll entertain a motion to go into public hearing for PC, case PC 2511, special use permit amendment, 1200 North Prince Crossing Road, Forming of America LLC. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Janaro makes the motion, a second by Tom. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Again, John, would you be sworn in and give us a brief overview of where we're at?
If you sound as well to officiate these were single so question of ability and to fill the whole of the number.
I do. Thank you. Okay, this is a request for a seventh amendment to the special use permit for Forming America, which is located at 1200 North Prince Crossing Road on the west side of Prince Crossing Road, just south of North Avenue, um, located in the manufacturing district. And what the amendment is for is to add a paved area on the far north end of the property, uh, which will be, which is about 81,000 square feet. New zoning for the areas, as I mentioned, it's located in the manufacturing district. Um, so this, this is to, uh, pave about 81,000 square feet of the area to the north on the property for additional outside storage on the property. So the special use permit that exists for Forming America, uh, which was, uh, granted several years ago, it was for outside storage on the property. They have expanded recently, last year, they had, um, done a, an additional paved area, and this is the final phase of paving, um, paving the property for outside storage. So once this, once this area is approved and it's paved out there, the site will be fully built out, and there won't be any additional areas for pavement or outside storage property. Um, staff is recommending approval of the seventh amendment with the conditions outlined in the staff report. Uh, staff has also drafted findings of fact for consideration. Uh, staff did receive one piece of correspondence, uh, from the forest preserve district, and essentially, that was, um, uh, essentially to, just to take care with, um, lighting that occurs on the property, how it could have an impact on, uh, the environment in that area, and then also asking the property owner to refrain from using asphalt sealants that contain, uh, cold tart products. So that letter from the forest preserve that was included, uh, within the plan commission's packet. We do have the petitioner present this evening. They can provide additional information. I can insert questions.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Come on forward. Raise your right hand and be sworn. State your name for the court reporter, please.
If you sound as well, firm, per, that the testimony should be a, the true goal for. Benjamin Stewart. Seventh amendment.
So, in our last time, you being great.
Um, I just read the notes from the forest preserve. Um, right now, we have no plans to put lighting there, so we'll, shoot. Um, as far as not using cold tar products to seal, I'd be the, look into.
Looking at alternatives?
Yeah. But if, if that's what they need, they're good.
Thank you. Um, so will this be paved like the rest of the, um, the area?
Yes.
So congratulations on having the need to do that.
Right now.
Yeah, excellent. Do any of the commissioners have any questions?
Just, has there been any sort of, uh, engineering done, um, regarding attention? We keep paving and paving and paving here. Where does that work?
I don't have a, I'm, so there is with the, I can trip around the projector, there is within your packet, um, what looks kind of like a landscape plan. And there is, I apologize for this. There is a detention area that's on the west side that has already been constructed, and they are going to be adding on to that detention area to the north. So that has, uh, received preliminary approval from the county, from the city's stormwater engineer, and then also DuPage County, their stormwater department has signed off on. So stormwater is being accounted, be reconfiguring, remodeling that existing detention.
Tom?
I'm, I'm kind of confused because they're building out there now. What are they, what are they proving that?
They started building, um, well, they started, started clearing, um, vegetation out there, um, prior to getting it approved, so they were, but I know that they had to seize all activity until such time that they actually have approval.
And then that's all they did?
But they had to go to adjudication, so there were fines, and so they went through our vacation process.
Well, I mean, it looks like the whole pad has been built, but.
They have, uh, graded, and yeah, I'll let the petitioner speak to how far they have gotten.
There was a clay pile on the, the face one and two that we paid last year. There was a clay powder that we had to move over to face three.
Face three, Venus.
Being the north, of course.
But no asphalt's been laid or anything like that?
No.
No, no asphalt.
Well, what is the, uh, the top material? What's the?
Uh, clay and grindings, which is, that's what we had sitting on base two before. That looks pretty complete. That's not city men over there? It looks like it's been built.
Yes, I mentioned they're placed in violation.
So what is the extent of the violation?
They were issued a stop work order, and they, the order is essentially the, from the adjudication judges, they cannot continue when you rock until you see them.
So has they built the detention area?
They, I don't.
There's some of that that has been graded out as we finished up phase two.
So the county would have needed to approve this before us to do the detention area?
The county did have to sign off.
The county is there? Yeah, so the county's good, the city's not.
They need to get their special use permit. We wouldn't issue a permit for the, a building permit for this until they have their special use permit.
What's the building? All the buildings?
Yeah, that's.
And then what is, what is the purpose of the storage? What's going to go on the storage here? Uh, most of what's going to go over there is pipe races.
Over your own pipe?
Yep.
So it's not like a, uh, it's, we're not recently, not, no, it's yours?
It's stated in a previous ordinance ages ago that they could not do that, that it has to be all your own material. Okay? And, um, you're familiar with, uh, conditions that was rec, laid out in staff to go forward? You're fine with those? Okay. Are there any other questions? So, John, can you put the forest preserve letter in the record, official record and? And I want to remind, thank you very much. Thank you. Remind the commissioners once again to review the findings of fact, and our approval will be based on our agreement with the, um, finding of facts by staff. If there are any other questions, reminding you that all questions and information needs to be obtained in the public hearing. Tom, okay? Okay? No questions? No more questions? No more questions over here? That being said, then, uh, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Casper, second by?
Second.
Janaro. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. So now I'll continue with our deliberations of public hearing of case PC 2512 zoning text amendment. Oh, I'm sorry, the 20, case, we see case 2511, special use permit amendment for 1200 North Prince Crossing Road, Forming America LLC. Is there any discussion, any consideration, any discussion about what we've heard? If not, uh, entertain a motion of approval of the proposed amendment, subject to the following conditions that are outlined in our packet. And having considered the findings of fact, a motion of approval.
I will make that motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Casper, second by Mr.?
Second.
Terasus? John, please call the roll.
Commissioner Casper?
Aye.
Commissioner Terasus?
Aye.
Commissioner Slattery?
Aye.
Chairperson Lyman's?
Aye.
For yes, zero, no, motion carries.
You have said?
And again, this will go next to the development committee next Monday, June 9th at 6:00 PM.
Thanks, bye. Now, to review and recommendation of case PC 2512, zoning text amendment, chickens and residential properties. I need a motion to go into public hearing. Motion by Mr. Terasus.
I could.
Second by Mr. Casper. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Mr. Stewart, please be sworn in.
Do you sound as well or firm to officiate cities or the ability and to tell the true goal for the main?
I do. Thank you. Okay, so at the April 21st Public Affairs Committee meeting, um, just a month and a half ago, the Public Affairs Committee had discussed the concept of allowing chickens to be kept on property that are used as single-family residential. And, uh, the, this concept was received favorably from the Public Affairs Committee, and they had instructed staff to prepare a zoning text that would permit this type of use on residential properties. So staff had done research into surrounding communities, and I looked at 14 nearby communities uh, to determine, one, if they allow, uh, chickens on residential properties, and if they do, what some of the regulation, what regulations do they have? Um, that would, uh, have restrictions on what you can, can't do in terms of allowing chickens on, on property. So seven of these, uh, 14 communities, they don't allow chickens at all. The other seven, they do allow, uh, chickens, and they do, for the most part, have very similar regulations. So staff had, uh, put together an analysis of the various requirements for these communities, and, uh, prepared some language, um, for the Public Affairs Committee when they first discussed this, and tried to kind of make it, uh, consistent with the other communities with what the proposed regulations are for this type of use. So the Public Affairs Committee, they were generally in favor of what was discussed and some of the proposed, um, restrictions for this type of use. So I have this on the screen as far as what staff is proposing based on the feedback from the Public Affairs Committee. So essentially, uh, what the text amendment would allow is would amend, uh, sections, or article six of the zoning code, uh, which is kind of a catch-all for regulations in zoning districts. And, uh, what it would allow is keeping the chickens permitted on all properties used as single-family residential that are at least 6,500 square feet in area. That is the minimum lot size for a single-family residential lot.
So that's like 60 by 100, but 60 feet?
Yeah, so it, it's 50 by, one by?
120 or something?
30, yeah, it's about. So the minimum width for a single-family lot is, uh, 50 feet. Um, so this would be subject to the following restrictions, uh, no more than six hens would be permitted on, be kept on a single zoning lot. Uh, roosters would be prohibited. A chicken coop would be required with a minimum setback of 10 feet from all property lines, and a minimum of six square feet of a chicken coop per chicken. And that chicken coops can only be permitted within the rear yard. Uh, that all feet shall be maintained in road-approved containers. Slaughtering is permitted, you know, sale of eggs or chickens is permitted, and then no other poultry livestock or other farm-type animals are permitted. So again, this, these regulations were discussed by the, uh, Public Affairs Committee. They were okay with this. They wanted staff to then process the zoning text amendment, and schedule the public hearing for it. Um, so we don't have a petitioner, so staff is the petitioner, uh, for this evening, uh, but I can certainly answer any questions.
Well, let's hear from those who've come to talk to us about. Laurie Burke? So you'll just state your name and raise your right hand and be sworn in, Mrs. Burke?
Oh, Laurie Burke?
Do you sound as well or firm? The testimony should be a, the whole truth.
Yes. Okay, um, well, I don't, I just have a problem, um, because of our lot's so small. You know, you were saying like 50 by 100. So anytime that a neighbor does something close to the border, it's gonna affect you. Um, we, we've had neighbors where they had a rabbit poop, and the, the rabbit poop would be right there by the fence, and then our dog would eat it. Uh, we have another neighbor with a bird feeder right by the border, and our driveway is there, so our car is constantly getting poop down. So we're very, we're tired of our border being, um, messed up, and we're really afraid of a chicken coop. You know, I, I don't mind people having chickens, but I don't want to be in, bothered by the chickens. Um, I was reading some ordinances where they had them like 15 feet away from the border. You said 10. I was like, I don't, I think kind of 10 is maybe still too close. Um, also, what they do with, um, all the straw and the chicken poop, you know, I would like a stipulation, where is that gonna go? Because you have the coop, but, you know, the neighbor could put that kind of stuff on the border, and we don't want to raise chickens, and we don't want to have the problems of chickens, uh, the raccoons, rats. We're already dealing with three raccoons in our yard, you know, because of the, the bird feed always in the yard next door, so. Yeah, you said no roosters. And uh. And then the straw. And they're bedding um. I'm afraid windy days, that's all going to blow over to our yard. Just concerned about all these things, you know, that's fine. If we don't have to be bothered with it because we already have to put up with enough.
So you want the chickens to be good neighbors?
Yeah. You know, I I have an, I have enough work to do. I don't need to keep cleaning up after, you know, some their wishes. You know, that's fine, you know, as long as I don't get bothered with it and I'm afraid of, you know, uh.
Yeah, well, that's one of the questions I think we'll ask John in a little bit is what happens if we have a. Problem, what what do neighbors do if there is a problem? That's one of the questions we can ask John in a in a little bit.
Yeah, because we lose lose, you know, it's like there's no stipulation for, you know, anything we want to complain about for the city, you know, it's like. Oh, well, that's fine. Well, we're not happy.
Yeah, but well, let's just ask him now, John, what would happen if there was a complaint above? Of sloppy chickens?
Sloppy chickens.
Sloppy chickens, sloppy chicken keep.
Well, did. Depending on the situation, it could be a nuisance.
Violently a shop.
So I mean, if obviously, if any, i- if any. Requirement is not being met that is approved as part of this text amendment, any subsequent amendments. Uh then the property owner would have to make modifications to comply with it. So if there's a case of there is uh. Chicken excrement that's all over the property, I mean, that would be a nuisance violation. We could, the the plant commission could suggest adding another requirement that. Um, something along the lines of the area where chickens are kept has to be kept in a neat and orderly fashion at all times.
And what do they do with that? All their poop and straw and bedding.
So they would have to properly dispose of it. So they keep it on the property.
What 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 do you decide is proper?
I kind of spent my afternoon on chicken websites and um not that I'm a chicken expert at this point, but I did read that. It's there's recommended practices that it's disposed of in garbage bags and garbage day and or in the appropriate places. So and it's not spread as fertilizer or anything like that. That's my understanding, but if some of the other people come up, maybe they can address that too, as what they see would happen.
Yeah, and and I don't know if it's gonna, you know, probably will attract more raccoons and. You know, we're we're not in a wilderness area, you know, I can understand if you're by the woods, but you're in suburbs. You're just in a losing battle with the raccoons and.
At my house, it sucks.
Uh, this would be community.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, Tracy Brown.
Hello, I'm Tracy Brown. I only found out about this um about five thirty, so I wasn't prepared. Um, I wanted to say that I do support people to have the option of having residential chickens. Um, I wasn't aware of these um. Guidelines, but I think that they're pretty fair. I haven't done a lot of extensive research into it because at this point it wasn't something we were allowed to have. I have looked at it as a what if we ever got this, what if we moved kind of a thing. Um. And so things like how to deal with the excrement, the hay, things like that. People do composting, but also throwing it away like. How we clean up our dog excrement works very easily and I don't see why that would be a problem with six hens. It would be pretty easy to clean up, I think. Um, they definitely wouldn't make as big of a mess as my three dogs. With the chicken coop for the concerns about the hay, I think that the chicken coop, its proper chicken coop would minimize any. Hay or bedding being flying around, um much more so than when people lay hay down. To keep their grass down when they're growing their new grass. But, you know, people have their concerns. Um, we have a fence currently, so I don't think our neighbors would mind too much, but that's us. Um. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I support this. I appreciate you looking into it and opening this up for an option for us.
Thank you. Morning, men commissioners. If you have any questions for the people who are talking to us, please feel free to ask them. Um Kathleen Brown.
Kathleen Brown. So I'm excited to hear about the chickens. Um, I actually grew up on a small farm, small family farm. Um, in a map dot downstate and I became an engineer and I moved up here. Um, so I'm excited to um hear about it. Um, I heard about it initially at one of the council meetings. Um, most of the things that you have up here are reasonable. My question is about the no slaughtering. That really is my my first question. Chickens is don't live that long and I'm not sure why. And I apologize, can I a little bit utilitarian, but I'm not sure why you'd want to throw them away if you need them. And I apologize for that, since people. Um, it's just my point of view. Um, they really only live about three to seven years and they can only lay eggs for about two to three years. Um, and after that, they're an expensive pet. You know, I think they just, that's how it is. Um, as far as the bedding, generally. We didn't use hay, there's something that's closer to like gravel. So it's more like cleaning a litter box. And you scoop it up and you can dispose of it and it generally doesn't blow her out. Um, the other thing is. A forty pound dog generates ten times more solid waste than chickens. So um it's actually less of a problem. I have dogs that come into the yards that run around the community. They regularly defecate in my yard, which is not pleasant, but. It's, you know, common problem, I guess.
You said that it was a forty pound dog was ten times more?
Ten times more solid waste than chickens. One, one forty pound dog versus one chicken. Uh, one of the aldermen um had said something about the smell. I said they lived next to a farm and the smell was awful and they were worried about the smell. Um, my other question for the alderman, which we couldn't ask, but is what kind of farm? Because I grew up on a small family farm, there's commercial farms and then there's urban farms. In general, a commercial farm has fifty to fifty thousand chickens. A small family farm generally has about fifty and then you're saying six. Personally, I think four is more than enough for the space that we have here. Six might be a little generous. Um. And the other thing is that um it would be helpful um to um. Help people who might be new to having chickens to have some sort of an informational packet. And licensing that you could sort of um introduce more responsibility around having them known.
So I have a question for you, if you don't mind. Um, so our ordinance, the proposed ordinance doesn't talk about a chicken run. And um it would seem to me that if my neighbors wanted to have chickens, I would want them contained in. A run type of capacity, so they're not coming through my fence or coming over onto my lawn. Um, and having my dog eat them for lunch. Um, these chicken runs are usually. In included in most. Situations.
Generally chickens cannot get over a six foot fence. So as long as they have some sort of a fence, they can't really get very far anyways. They can't really fly. Generally, there are worse.
So it means a chicken wire pen around the coop would be advised?
Generally that does that, but I mean, there's hawks around my house that lead them. Again, sorry, I don't mean to be crass about it, but um there are plenty of predators and they'll help themselves to chickens. So.
So you think it would be reasonable to add a requirement to for a chicken run?
I feel like they probably should be enclosed.
Okay.
Um, I a chicken run really should be enclosed. And generally they are, that you would put a roof over the top so that predators can't fly down and eat them. Um, but um again predators like raccoons and mink. Um, you know, they'll get through anything that isn't like half inch hard or cloth. Everybody loves chicken, I guess. We're a group, it's harder to keep chickens than it probably is here. Um, because yeah predators and once the predators find you, they'll come back.
What about chickens in the winter? I mean, we don't actually, in this proposal, a chicken coop isn't defined. You know, um, I mean, do do chicken coops have electricity? Do they? Do they need to be insulated for the winter? I worry about the little chickens in the Chicago winters.
Uh, generally you will only have little chickens in the spring.
Okay.
Um, because uh and hens won't lay eggs over the winter. Because they'll reserve their heat, but you do need heaters for them. There are little sort of light bulb heaters. And the biggest um issue around that generally is. Getting the ones that are proper from the. You can't just throw anything in there because it's a fire hazard. Uh, because it is enclosed and generally you would put chickens in at night. So that they're totally sealed out, they can't go out in the run overnight, so that they're safe and warm.
So what would you suggest for like permitting or um? I mean, in inspections and things like that, right now nothing's proposed. Do you think it would be wise for? To have some sort of inspection once a coop is built to so that we know that it's safe for chickens and safe? With the electricity and things?
I feel like it would be reasonable to request that. There is some inspection of what it is, but then you'd have to define what passes inspection. Personally, I I feel like if you want to keep them safe and enclosed, you probably need someone to inspect it. Not as a. Another hurdle to, but as an assistance to the people that are trying to get up and start with them.
As far as the slaughtering goes, um, I'm assuming when I saw the no slaughtering is that you would have to take it, the chicken someplace and have it slaughtered. Would that be, um, I mean, we're not saying you can't eventually devour your pet, but.
I don't know.
That's why I don't know, but though someone lost their goat today, I saw that. Um, um, yeah, so um. Okay. Yeah, I don't know whether to go to.
Slaughtering chickens is actually very easy. I don't know, it's just an odd stipulation. I was just curious why.
I know this, all the communities have, all the communities have that in there, no slaughtering.
And what, 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 what do you do with it? I mean, they don't. They don't live that long.
I suppose, I suppose. Your neighbor see you going to your coopish or rep, my place will be a little disturbing.
There are, there are children here, there are children here.
What what about uh the sound? Just since you seem that it seems very knowledgeable, I I know that roosters are, you know. Part of the sound problem, but uh just with the hens, they're, they also, what what's your your experience been with noise related to chickens?
Um, we can hear what you think they sound like.
Why?
Do they make enough noise?
They, did they, did they?
No, more of a. It's not a lot of squawking, they're quieter than dogs for sure, especially my neighbor's dogs. Um. Uh, yeah, I I don't know, they're they're not loud. Roosters are loud or can be at least. Um, they're they're not louder than dogs. Uh. Personally, I wouldn't keep more than three because it's a lot of work, but. Like, you know, if somebody wants six and they have a bigger family, okay.
Are there any other questions from who we have now designated as an expert? Can I answer some questions for us? Thank you so much. Thank you. Um. Laura and Clara Finch. Clara, you have to raise your right hand and and listen to the gentleman's words.
I have learned a lot from living next to our neighbors.
Clara, can you come closer? And use your outside voice. Okay.
I have learned a lot from living next to our neighbors backyard chickens. And.
I'm ready for it.
And I'm completely. When our neighbor leaves, we go and let up the chickens out and. Collect the eggs. Usually there are two chickens. I have experienced eight years. Of living next to chickens and they do not smell very much. Their eggs. They, they just taste better than the ones we find in the shore. I do not want roosters. Backyard chickens should be allowed in worship publicity.
Sorry, I had to take your picture for your mom. So Clara, would you mind turning that paper into us so we can have it in the official record? Thank you so much for your testimony. So what is your favorite part of chickens?
Um, they eat.
They lay eggs. So you like to eat a lot of eggs. Do they taste different than to store eggs?
Yeah.
How do they?
Different.
A little different? Are they bigger? Do the chickens mind you taking their eggs?
Yeah. We both let them out and they just wander.
Oh, you wait till they leave and you take their chick, their eggs. Oh, smart girl. You don't want to get pecked, huh? How many, how many eggs do you get a day?
Um, usually one.
Usually one. Oh, they're kind of lazy, the young lady.
One chicken.
Okay. Do you go in the winter and get eggs?
If our neighbor leaves. They don't leave normal.
Oh, okay, yeah. Well, thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good job. Laura, did you want to add anything?
No, she said it all.
Heather. Ms. Allen.
Heather, Ms. Yola. Hi, um, I am here just to speak in support of backyard chickens. Um, I'm here as a resident, not as a journalist. Um, I'm very much in favor of hens against roosters as. We've all been discussing. Um, I just want to say that um I think it would be. A great way for people to become more self-reliant and self-sufficient in the community. Um. It's a great learning experience for families, homeschoolers, children, as we just saw. Um. I think it would help people maybe with grocery costs too, like a part of our community is very vulnerable. And maybe can't afford all of the groceries that they need. If they were allowed to raise chickens either for meat or eggs. It could provide extra protein for their families, just like gardens. Um. So I just wanted to ask you guys to please um recommend to um the city council. Um, that we should be allowed to keep chickens um in our backyards if we choose, obviously with. Fair and reasonable expectations and guidelines. Um, I think also as far as chickens go. Um. You know, as far as weeds, they can keep down weeds because they keep the soil aerated with their claws, keeps down weeds. Therefore, they also eat a lot of pests too, so it can um, you know, keep down on a lot of the problems. That people might be having creeping into their yards. Um. It also um is like a natural fertilizer, their wa- their waste, you can use it in your garden. And that way you get more nutrient-dense uh, vegetables or fruits in your gardens if you use the chicken waste. So it's like, it's a whole cycle, um, you know, it's kind of a way of life to keep chickens. And like the other lady was saying too, they're much quieter than dogs. Um, from what I have seen, my dad had a farm like three hours west of town. And I grew up with feeding chickens, um, you know, they usually, like the little girl said, one egg a day, you know? And if we keep small blocks, it's manageable. And if you have guidelines on how far away they're supposed to be, if their food is covered, like you guys are saying. I don't see raccoons or squirrels or anything being an issue if it's, if they follow the rules that you guys are putting forward, I think they're very sensible. So, um, that is all I wanted to say.
Would you, would you consider an enclosure or a chicken run as part of the ordinance to be reasonable so that they're not free range on the backyard?
Um, I would think that that would be reasonable and fair, however, there are things called chicken tractors. They're like a little mobile coop on wheels that you can wheel around in your garden. So they're pooping, pooping and eating the waste, um, I mean, the bugs in your garden.
But they're contained.
Yes, but they're contained in like a little cart where you can wheel them around. And then maybe at night or when they're done grazing or whatever it's called foraging, you can put them back into their coop. So I think it's completely, um, for me, honestly, I wouldn't want it if my neighbors had free range chickens. And they're coming through my fence or what, you know, I think if it's contained in your property. It, it's quieter than dogs and it provides benefits to the residents. So I just would ask that you guys would consider it.
Okay, thank you. There's a gentleman in the back who wanted to say something, who didn't sign up.
Yeah, should I? Um, even there, say my name.
Yeah, just come on forward, if you didn't fill out a slip and you still would like to speak, just come on forward.
Yeah.
And raise your right hand and state your name.
Alan Miller. You sound square or firm, did you have truth, the whole truth? I do, thank you. I just wanted to speak specifically to the noise, because I've stuck, like, looked this up. Um, the city of Pleasanton, California, did a study when they were considering chickens uh, to determine the noise levels. And their study showed that they showed, or that they have sixty-three decibels at two feet away and at nine feet away did not register. Uh, and for reference, sixty-three decibels is similar to human conversation. Um, and a dog is usually between ninety and a hundred decibels.
Oh, that's great to know.
Yeah. Yeah, and I just wanted to also refer to the waste thing. I mean, I pro people having the right, you know, have dogs, we can have four dogs legally in West Chicago. And you can imagine how much more waste four dogs can produce than six chickens, but.
Yeah.
That's my main comment.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the commission? Then just come on forward and um, state your name and raise your right hand and be sworn in.
You sound sway, or affirm, did you have a shirt, the whole truth, and have a little turd. So, uh, I grew up having chickens since I was little. Uh, we have friends in Dixon, Illinois that have chickens. So their lot is point seventy acres, most likely similar to lots here in West Chicago. And they do have roosters and you cannot hear the rooster on that point seventy acre lot. You cannot, not even the neighbor will notice that there's a rooster in there. So the noise levels for chickens, they're not, it's not that much. And we do recommend that the chickens be kept in a, in a run. It is very important that they are contained. They do need at least six hours of free roaming though, so if there's owners or professionals, chicken keepers. That know how to really handle a chicken, they could roam the chicken for six hours and then put it back in the run. With no issues on them going to the neighbors or anything like that as long as they're supervised. And they do fertilize along too, their ways to fertilize where it works pretty good. And with having like raccoons and stuff like that, there is. Chemicals out there that would eliminate chicken odor, so it doesn't attract raccoons and all those animals. So I mean, they sell them on Amazon for like six bucks, they sell them on the arts. Uh, you just buy it, uh, eliminating odor for animals. And in the winter, I don't recommend having a light bulb for the winter because those are dangerous, they do create fires. They do so, heaters are specialized to prevent fires. There are heaters that you put on the wall, you connect them to, to an electrical outlet, they will keep the coop hot in the winter. So then, you know, you don't have to worry about freezing temperatures and stuff like that, and they are way better than having a light bulb. You don't know what can happen with a light bulb, and this is just a heater that you will, you put your hand close to it and you throw the heat. The chickens will just, you know, stand next to it and sleep and it's not dangerous at all. And with the mess and stuff like that, chickens are not, I mean, they're not messy. They, you, you have a coop and you have all their hay inside the coop, they're not going to keep, kick that hay out of their coop to the run. They're pretty clean with that, when they need to go to the run, they'll go to the run, when they gotta go to bed, when they go in the coop and they grow, they go to sleep. You won't even notice that there's chickens out there. Um, I, I am for roosters, I love Hispanics, love roosters. They love hearing the roosters in the morning, although with a point seventy acre lot, you can really hear the rooster. But a lot of them are like, hey, that reminds me of when I was little and living in Mexico, you, you hear that rooster at four or five in the morning, it's beautiful. It's a beautiful sound that takes you back to where you grew up. But again, I, I'm against having roosters in a small lot. But if you have a large space, why not have a rooster in a large space? They do recommend, uh, like. There's limits of how many yards a lot has to have to have a rooster. So I will say, look at those limits, you know, how many, how many feet.
Oh, you're saying for larger, larger lots.
For larger lots, why not, why can't we have a rooster and if you have a, a large lot? You know, like, this, there should be something that allows you to have rooster if you have a huge lot. And I understand with small, small ones, but why, why have that limit on big lots too? You know, do, do you have a one acre lot, why can't you have a, a rooster in a one acre lot?
I have to tell you, my son lives on a one acre lot and his neighbor next door has a one acre lot. And I hear that rooster all the time, that rooster is confused. Throughout the day.
They, they do sing at two in the morning, so they do, their clock do, they tend to get messed up.
Yeah.
But I mean, from what I've seen and, and heard when we're in Dixon, we don't really hear the roosters out there. And, you know, it's not a, neighbors don't really have an issue with it either, so.
Okay, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Can, should a chicken coop be up against the house? Or is it that?
I don't recommend it being next to the house.
Okay, so no next to the house.
No, if you're going to have a, a run and then chicken coop have it in the backyard, far away from the neighbor's fence, far away from your garage. Far away from your house, you gotta keep it in the back.
In the back so it gets air?
E- exactly, so you got air and all that stuff. And then, like they said, they don't want to deal with chicken mess either, or chicken noises and stuff like that. And I do agree, like, you know, ten feet is, is fair. Um, and I, you know, I do recommend a lot being point fifty acres or bigger to have chickens. Just so I don't think a small a, a small lot should have chickens, just, you know. So some neighbors don't have issues with them and stuff, so.
How do you feel about a permit and an inspection for the chicken coop when it's erected?
I'm, I'm okay with a, with an inspection, just, you know, to make sure that, I mean. You go to Chicago, there is people that have chickens in Chicago and some of them have them in their garage. And I mean, I'm so against that, that's not fair to the chickens, why would you have your chickens in, in a non-good, you know, area to sleep in? And stuff like that, so they, you know, there should be laws out there to, you know, have the chickens be healthy. Get them around, get them a coop, um.
So the coop should be just dedicated slowly for chickens, not a shed that also houses your lawnmower and?
Exactly, yeah, you want a dedicated coop, don't, not something that you're putting other stuff in there. No, it's not healthy for the chickens and. You know, build coop on your equipment and then you carry it out and, you know, I mean, it's. I'm, I'm so with the ordinance, you know, I agree with some of them, but. Just with people that have bigger lots, just give them more freedom to have more stuff than people that have smaller, smaller lots. That's all I.
Okay, alright, thank you, thank you for your advice. I'm sorry, sir, what was your name?
I didn't. Ricardo. Thank you.
Is there any, um, Louise?
I'm so totally not prepared.
You have to raise your right hand for.
What's your name?
Louise Handel.
You sound swirled, or affirm, to tell the truth, the whole truth.
I do. I just came because I thought it sounded interesting to, and I also knew there was going to be both sides. I think this is a phenomenal amount of resources for our community to tap into. That could be much more helpful than that brief outline. Because I think that anybody that would be objectionable, you know, objecting to this just from the get-go, right, without information. Would be a lot happier than with some proactive advice for the potential owners. I think going there and saying, well, if something happens, we'll cite them, is the backwards way of doing it. I think you really need to invest in a lot of research, there's lots of people here, I can't believe how much knowledge they have. Um, other communities have very, very specific um, guidelines for this, for the coop, for the building, for the, the waste. I think this is a little premature for a decision that looks like just from the information. That it would make people that are going in unhappy or potentially in the future unhappy. By really carefully thinking about what you're going to ask for people. And surely if you're going to have any kind of electricity or building types of things, those should be spelled out to people ahead of time. Don't let people go and invest a lot of time and money and into something and then slap them later for saying, well. Kind of close, but it's not close enough, people get really unhappy after the fact when you've spent some effort into that. So that's just my take.
Thank you, Louise.
But you guys are awesome.
So. Um, like I said, I, are there any other comments from the other commissioners, concerns?
I, I agree with the permanent inspection for the chicken coop, so that way. Um, we know what's going on there before they even have a hen. And once we make sure that it's structured well and everything looks good, then we can set that approval. So they can have a hen too, that's what I'm thinking.
So I, I think we agreed that of some sort of inspection, I did look up the um. Shed, um, permit guide that's given out for people who want to build a shed. And maybe something like this could be developed for the chicken coops. Um, you know, and um, if it's a certain size, thirty-six square feet or something, it's okay. But um, especially if you're going to have electricity run out there.
Right.
We need to have it inspected, I think, and.
And potentially waste disposal and things.
Sanitation.
Yeah, so I wrote down that uh, the chicken excrement must be disposed of properly. Um, in a refuse container and not spread or stored on the property.
Well, but we heard about chicken. Fertilizer, you know, as long as the chicken is contained, maybe it's something more to do with um. Sanitation to eliminate odors or prevention of odors. That, 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 that the chickens have kept, the coop is kept in a neat and orderly sanitary fashion. And not near the house, I think that was good advice that we heard, not near the house or garage. That it be in the back and that we need some sort of chicken run so they're, they're enclosed. And um. In that we can't use a garage or a shed, I mean, I don't know how you word that, but they have to have their own.
A dedicated chicken coop.
Yeah, they have to have their own house.
In ours, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Just one more thing when you.
Oh, come on, come on over and you just, you just have to, so he can get you on the public hearing record.
You sound sway, or affirm, to tell the truth, the whole truth.
You know, you mentioned the runway, so then I got concerned. Okay, you're saying the coop needs to be ten feet away, which I prefer fifteen feet away, but then they could do the runway along the fence. So.
No, it would have to be attached to the coop.
Okay, so it all is considered in a way.
Yeah, it would be attached to the coop.
I, I think, I think, I think everybody's point there is just a, a little premature maybe, or just set it. Somebody's just got to dig into the, look some specificity on, on each of these things. Um, even, even a slaughtering thing, I mean, I totally get the, you know, the graphic potential there or whatever. But how do you dispose of them and, you know? I want to, you know, enjoy my chickens start to finish, you know, how, right? How do I do that in a way that's acceptable to everybody?
Well, and it has to be understood too that if an HOA does not allow chickens. Then the city ordinance has nothing to do with that, right?
Well, if an HOA prohibits chickens, then that is, they wouldn't be allowed to have them per that, those HOA covenants.
Yeah, because the HOA covenant supersedes.
Now, they have to add it to the covenants and they don't meet that often necessarily, so.
It's, yeah, it would be up to the HOA, so the city could permit it and the HOA has to override that situation. They, they go to.
Well, I guess maybe that's um, you know, the provision there that, you know, you'd have, I mean, if, before my fence was put in. Contractor said that I had to go and, yeah, he wanted some, a letter from the HOA saying that the type of fence I was putting in was acceptable. That could be that kind of language for the. That's chicken poop or her as well, suppose.
Yeah, there, there are, a lot of HOAs do have uh, covenants that are much more restricted than city ordinances. Where you can only have, say, a certain type of fence or color of fence, or say you can't have a shed at all on a property. So um, there, we do have agreements with select HOAs that choose to have. Um, this process with the city where, when a building permit is applied for in a specific residential development with an HOA. That has this arrangement set up, where the HOA has to sign off on that permit or that application for the position. Not every HOA has that, they, you know, it's up to the HOA if they do that process, but that could be something similar to this. We always, um, with permits that come in, make an applicant aware of that, there may be covenants that they. From their HOA, they should, I guess, address that.
I do have one more letter here that was sent in by email to um, the city. My name is Trish Kanata and I have been a resident of West Chicago for about ten years. I'm an avid gardener and animal lover. I believe that people of West Chicago would benefit by having the opportunity to own backyard chickens or domestic ducks for many reasons. Chicken ownership can reduce anxiety and depression, provide social connection, connection to nature. And get people moving with low-impact physical activity. They are great at keeping pests such as grubs or ticks or small rodents under control. They provide natural fertilizer and reduce food waste. The most obvious benefit is having a source, source of healthy eggs. In a time where our dollars don't stretch as far as they used to and our food supply chains can easily be stressed. Backyard chickens can really be helpful. Obviously, I believe there should be some restrictions on how chickens should be kept. Noise, cleanliness, safety and space are important factors to consider. All in all, they are really extraordinary benefit for people willing to put in the time and effort to care for them. And not really a detriment to neighbors when they're, were well cared for. So. I'm wondering about this, building on what um, Mrs. Handel said. And based on what we've heard from the public who are here tonight. Remember when we did the um. The V, V R B O ordinance?
Uh, yeah, short-term home rental.
Short-term home rental, you actually called in a group of citizens and you sat down and kind of hammered out what would be. A good ordinance, can we recommend that the city council do that to? To work with maybe some of the people who spoke here tonight, to develop some of the finer points of this. Basic ordinance?
Yeah. Yeah.
What?
Yeah, it's up to the plan.
What would you all feel? Is there consensus to go forward with? First of all, do we have consensus to go forward with chickens? Well, are there any other questions? We need to close the public hearing first. Are there any other questions? Are there any other comments from members of the audience? Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Kanata makes the motion second.
Second.
And Mr. Slattery, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, discussion. Deliberation. Is it fair to say that we have consensus that chickens, backyard chickens would be okay?
I agree.
With certain conditions?
Yeah, I, I promise certainly, certainly with the chickens, I think there's a lot more definition that has to be done there, so whether we kind of table this, I don't know if it's best to table this and, and, and have, you know, staff or whatever come back with more definition or is the proper way to do it or to just say, yeah, we're fine with it? Go off and you know, with the recommendation that you flush it out more. I'm not quite sure what better, or should be, I'm kind of of the opinion.
It is more that.
It should be flushed out and then come back. And that's what I would think so.
Okay, so we're not ready to make a recommendation of the city council yet. We'd like it to be flushed out more. And flushing out more would we recommend that staff get together with some people from the community to get their input? Is, are there volunteers? Got two volunteers, volunteer? You have three volunteers right there. And I think Mrs. Bourne should be on the committee too. As a, as our as our voice of worry. So let's make sure we get your names and phone numbers before you go and then will, so do we table this?
So I would continue it to to the next plan commission meeting.
Is that realistic with your schedule?
Well, if it's not, then we can continue it to the next. Just so we don't lose the, the, the public hearing.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the topic of PC twenty-five, twelve to January first, July, July first. Talk about putting it up. July first, Plan Commission. Is there a motion? So motion by Mr. Slattery, second? You can call the Brooklyn.
I'm sorry, second. I did. Commissioner Slattery. Commissioner Casper.
Aye.
Commissioner Trazus.
I'm chairperson.
Or yes, zero, no, motion carries continue to Tuesday, July first at seven o'clock.
And thank you all for coming and your wonderful comments that will help us go forward with something everyone can be happy with. And is there any other business?
Yeah, we, we will have, even with this topic, we will have a meeting on Tuesday, July first. Yeah, that's all I have.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
And we'll make that motion.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion adjourned. Thank you. So if you guys will come forward and just give us your names and.